Call of order, the school board meeting on Monday, January 5th, 2015. Madam Clerk, roll over.
All members of the present please respond, Mr. Sternman, Ms. Gray, Ms. Larson, here, Mr. Chavala, Mr. Coleman, Mrs. Harris Mahoney, President Taylor, Mrs. P. B. F., here, Dr. Jones, Ms. McCallum, Mr. Stewart.
First order of business, Madam Clerk, is the election. Oh, I'm sorry, is there anyone in need of interpreting services?
You need to go to the microphone.
You can hold tight just for one second, I wanted to... Ms. Clerk, as you speak Spanish, is the sound system working in the other room?
Yes.
Yes.
Could you check? Yeah, we got the overflow, is anyone in overflow room?
More people, we have overflow room working too.
She's not, she speaks Spanish. First order of business is the election of officers. I will entertain the motion from the board members for chair. Mr. Moore?
Thank you. It is my pleasure and honor to nominate Mr. Coleman from the 7th District to serve as our chair for the next 12 months.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Ms. Harris Mahoney. Any other?
Motion was made by Mr. Coleman to nominate Mr. Coleman as chair of the school board, seconded by Ms. Harris Mahoney, Mr. Sternman?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Ms. Taylor?
Um, I guess I had a wonder if Mr. Coleman has anything to say as to how he plans to be for the regulation for the board, if he's possibly able to come out to the last round?
Mr. Michael?
Yes, this one.
Uh, it's my hope that if we afford this opportunity, uh, one of the key things that I would like to improve is, is that making sure, um, to the best of my ability, all voices are being heard.
Did you, um, speak to at all with your top three colleagues this past year?
Number one, making sure all voices are heard. Number two, being, making sure as a team that we're supporting, uh, seeing academic improvement within our schools, probably on a degree of how we work together, uh, to see improvement amongst that facility.
Any other discussion?
That's right, you can join my Dr. Jones.
Dr. Jones, I beg you, motion was made by Mr. Moore, seconded by Ms. Harris Mahoney to reelect Mr. Coleman as chair. Taylor, any discussion? Any other discussion before we go back to roll over?
Okay.
Discussion over?
No, uh, I support Mr. Coleman as chair.
Madam Clerk, roll over.
I'm sorry. Um, I guess I have this one final question. There's been a lot that has transpired over the course of this past year, and one of the things that I've noted to be most prominent, or at the top of the list in a way, is that we all don't share the same relationship with the media. Um, we currently do not have a policy towards how the media is addressed for this board as a whole, and it's been reflected that this is a divided board. And I just would like to know how you would be looking forward with addressing the media every next thing this year?
Well, again, I would think that, again, we mean, uh, more issue, I mean, if the majority of us feel the way that you're expressing, then I would definitely entertain how we go about changing our policy and procedure and how we go about doing it. But again, I would be a board decision.
Thank you.
Mr. P. B. F.?
One question for me, uh, Mr. Coleman, will you... And I'll be specific with regard to the media, and particular the article that was written in the newspaper this, uh, past weekend, and it spoke to the majority and minority. Do you actually see us as a majority and minority board?
Do I actually see us? No, I do not, but I do see, again, when we vote, that's, that's how a board operates. But I believe we're one board, and the reality is that when we come down to votes, then the board has focus when we vote, and basically that's based on majority.
We'd like to call for questions.
Any other discussion? Second recall of question?
As this vote is to call a question, Mr. Sternman?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mahoney?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. P. B. F.?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Oh, Coleman.
Okay, the, um, motion table was made by Mr. Coleman to nominate Mr. Coleman as chair, and it was seconded by Ms. Harris Mahoney. Mr. Sternman?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mahoney?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. P. B. F.?
I'm sorry.
Oh, Mr. Coleman, please.
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Colleagues, I would just, uh, have a, have a moment. Looking out into this audience here, I can see the people in this front room, principals and administrators, um, we got work to do, and that's what I'm excited about. I want to thank my colleagues for their vote of confidence. I also want to say that we have a tremendous opportunity to voice. Part of why I have decided to be willing to serve again is because of that opportunity that I see. The question was asked previously, do I see a divided board, or do I see a minority and majority? Um, if anybody knows me by now, there is an optimist, it's Don Coleman. I believe, I believe in Richmond, Virginia. I believe in our students, I believe in our principals, I believe in our teachers. I believe in the superintendent that we chose over a year ago. I believe in my colleagues, uh, sitting around this half circle here. But I'm also convinced that we have to decide to believe together. And what together looks like in a board situation is we, we have it out, we vote, and we move forward. That's, that's just how this works. And I know there have been times when I've been on the side of votes that I didn't agree with, but even as the chair, once that vote was made, I had to decide that this is what the board has decided. The other thing I would like to say to us, and I hope some young people could be watching this, hopefully somewhere on YouTube later, young people, hold us accountable. We're responsible to model to you what it's like to have fierce debate, but still be civil towards one another. That's, that's on us, and I believe we can get that done. And then, Dr. Bettin, I just want to say to you, it's on, sir. It's on, we, we as a board are going to decide to stay away from the things that have distracted us, and once we're focused, man, it's going to be obvious that we believe in seeing improvement, seeing things change, and seeing that you and the team have our support in making those things happen, and the accountability that our constituents ask of us to see those improvements. So again, colleagues, um, thank you for the vote of confidence, and, um, I appreciate the opportunity to serve, and I'm sure this may last for like five minutes, so I will enjoy it.
Madam Clerk?
Next item is to receive nominations for our two.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Mahoney?
I just want to make sure my name tag is right.
Oh, you will do that.
I do have a motion, so I would like to nominate Ms. Larson to serve as vice chair.
Second.
Any discussion? Any other nominations, I'm sorry. Any other nomination? Seeing none? Any discussion? Ms. Sterns?
Yes. Um, Ms. Larson, while it is my intent to vote yes, to serve in the role of vice chair, I'd like for you to speak to how, what, what role will you play in trying to make us one board, specifically, how do you plan to communicate with us and your colleagues?
Um, the way Mr. Coleman and I have worked in the past has been as a team, um, and I think that's worked pretty well so far. Um, there are times when he and I sort of divide and conquer in terms of reaching out to people, if board members feel like there's a different way to go about it, um, then I'm certainly open to it, and I assume he would be as well. Um, you know, there are times when, when things are delayed, or I send, send updates via email. I would say, you know, 90% of the time, it's after I said, "Mr. Coleman, does this make sense, should I go ahead and do this?", um, and that's how we work for the past year. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if you'll mind, we have a third rule overflow, the I2 department is asking that, you need to make sure you turn the mic on, speaking through the mic, so the far rule is usually here, that's why you're getting all those hands sick. Uh, Dr. Jones?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I support, uh, Ms. Larson, uh, for second role of vice chair. I guess this would probably be not just for her, but for, for you as chair as well. You made some great strides last year in terms of efficiency, uh, of our meetings, uh, and I would encourage both of you, uh, to continue, uh, to make those strides. Uh, I think we got better, but we can still be a little bit better with that in terms of biting off what we can shoot at one city. And so, as a nominee, I support, not just Ms. Larson, I would, uh, just want to echo that sentiment, uh, for efficiency, because I know you guys work on the agenda on Wednesdays, and so, I just want to make sure that, thank you.
Mrs. Mahoney?
I appreciate the, um, the responses, and I really did not have, um, much that I wanted to share, but since it's related on my heart, I just, oh, I'm sorry, you didn't tell me that, I'm gonna follow directions. I really didn't have much that I wanted to share, but since it has related on my heart, I will share this, because, um, some of the discussion, rightfully so, has been pretty much around team building, from what I've heard, how are we going to move forward, what are you all going to do to make that happen? And I guess for me, it is not up to the two of you to make sure that happens. We as a board have to make certain that happens. Um, it is evident that we can hold our leadership accountable for whatever we don't agree with, or for whatever happened. But I want to take this opportunity, and I am pleading with all nine of us, that we at some point decide that at the end of the day, it is truly about the children, and that's the reason why we're here. If we lose sight of that, then Houston, we have a huge problem. So, this is an opportunity for us to show the people that elected us, and not only that, it is so far more important than the people who elected us, no offense, it is truly about children, because those are the, those are the individuals that have provided us this opportunity for real, okay? Because without them, none of us would be here. So, we're going to have to come together, do a better job at the things that we have accomplished and have not accomplished, and decide it's not personal, that is strictly business. Now, if we're not going to do that, then we need to find something else to do. But my daughter is holding me accountable, and she's a student at RPS, and I don't want to continue to have these discussions about why these people can't get along, even though it's helpful for her, but also, she's not only watching this, she's watching all of us. So, we are going to have to put our big pants on and make some decisions, and make them about children. If we can't do that, then again, we need to find something else to do. I'm here with you, I'm a team player, I think governance training needs to continue as soon as possible, so we need to make certain that we will be committed to that, so we can grow as a board, and support demonstrations, and hold them accountable, but we can't hold them accountable if we are getting in the way. So, that's what I wanted to say, that it starts with us. You timing us on this? I want to take back my motion, right now, okay? You got to do that, okay? All right.
Mr. Coleman?
But seriously, I appreciate you all, but we have to appreciate each other, all right?
Ms. Taylor?
I just want to say to you that I appreciate, um, this board has a special vision of all of the individual board members, but I would just like to speak to the fact that, you know, I guess for me personally, there's a higher level of accountability for the two roles that we put you in. It's a role that says that you not only serve the constituency, but you also serve your colleagues, because you're the people that we're depending on for information for the betterment of our individual districts. You are the, the frontrunner, and so, I guess, I don't, I think pretty much all the questions have been asked, I think that I look forward to the communication, um, that we will have this coming year or throughout this year, but just to be thankful that there are a lot of things looking for you all to head up, bridging that gap, fostering that disconnect, and making sure that we have what we need in order to be successful. So, thank you for that.
Call for questions?
Second. Um, Ms. Harris Mahoney, for a question in discussion, seconded by Ms. Gray. Mr. Sternman?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mahoney?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. P. B. F.?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Yes.
The motion was made by Ms. Harris Mahoney, seconded by Ms. Gray, to elect Ms. Larson as vice chair. Mr. Sternman?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Harris Mahoney?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. P. B. F.?
Yes.
Ms. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Larson, do you want to say something?
Oh. I just want to say thank you to myself, board members, for giving Don and I another year, um, another go at this. I appreciate what Dr. Jones said about the meetings being more efficient, because I was feeling like that was an area that we still needed a lot of work on, um, and I, and I really do hope we can, um, keep improving in that area, um, as this year moves forward, and, um, you know, open to feedback, whatever communication issues, um, folks have, or how, if you'd like to see it differently, please let us know. I, I really appreciate being able to work as a, as a team with Don, and, um, there's a lot of work to do, so it's going to be a busy year, but thank you for your vote of confidence.
All right. Mr. Superintendent? Chair and board, I'd, uh, like to make a recommendation for clerk, I'm sorry, agent, deputy agent, is this returned over here?
Yes.
Uh, Brown West Bay and, uh, Dempsey to be reappointed as, uh, excuse me, agent deputy chair, so, sorry.
Was that a Dempsey?
Yes. Jory, Jory. She's presenting. Dempsey, Dempsey here? Maybe in the overflow. She's at the last meeting also. Same people, Brown West Bay and Dempsey, they're hating their.
We noticed the West, but it's a bunch of them.
There's Dempsey, remember? He just wanted to remember what your face is.
Okay.
The recommendation of the superintendent is for Mr. Rattler to stay to be agent and deputy agent, Dempsey, whose motion by Mr. Coleman, seconded by Mr. Sternman, Mr. Sternman?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman, I'm sorry, Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mahoney?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. P. B. F.?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Overflow nominations for clerk?
I'd like to nominate Angela Root.
Second.
Any other nominations? Who are the nominations? Nominations, nominations, nominations. Any other nominations? All right, who are the nominations?
We won't roll the gentleman.
That's next.
I apologize that I'm somewhat confused, I was not aware that we had an opportunity to nominate Angela Root for the deputy clerk position. I would like to nominate you, deputy clerk, to be the clerk, the clerk's position.
So, you're offering, who's the court clerk position?
Ms. Toni Brand.
Any other nominations? Call the attorney, attorney? Yes, sir. Thank you. Is it, I guess it's for attorney, do we need to ascertain whether or not Ms. Fran is willing to accept that nomination, or do we just act upon the motion?
See, she actively, I mean, typically, you, if someone wants to decline that position, they would express that thing, um, but if she does not decline, then she would be better than on the floor.
Thank you.
Same as those nominations, I think you have, uh, expected to decline.
Ms. Coleman? Mr. Coleman? Discussion. Now, we'll call for the question.
Call for the question.
Is there any discussion?
Uh, sorry, are we considering all things, and what pieces of the, that are your, um, what, um, the, 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 the decisions tonight?
Those are all things that we consider, um, once we've made a decision, and we follow our processes and procedures, and evaluate them. Question, poll discussion?
Call for the question, sir. This session, poll discussion was called by Ms. Harris. District clerk's discussion was called on Ms. Harris Mohammed, seconded by Mr. Sternman. Mr. Sternman?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Pinkney S?
Yes.
Mrs. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
The motion was made by Ms. Gray, seconded by Ms. Harris Mohammed to the Deputy Ms. Lewis S. clerk, Mr. Sternman?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor? Ms. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkney S?
Yes.
Mrs. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor? Motion passes, Pinkney.
Now, I'll take nominations for deputy clerk. Thank you very much. You have the nominations, deputy clerk.
Mr. Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to say that I appreciate the hard work and the law hours that I clerk and I deputy clerk put in. I know I have leaned on both of them on numerous occasions to make sure that, you know, information is afforded to me. So I just wanted to take this opportunity that I know it's been a long road getting to work with nine different personalities to include the superintendent, so ten, and then the attorney, the eleven. So that's a lot of people to work with and around. So, you know, I just publicly want to say I appreciate them and the work that they put in. I could not do it. So, you know, I am hopeful as you and optimistic that we can continue to support them in any way that we can as a board.
Thank you, Ms. Harris Mohammed.
You all can pay me later.
Close discussion. Question? Close discussion.
Call for the question. Somebody else got to call them.
No, I don't have to.
Oh, we don't have to.
Motion was made by Mr. Sternman, seconded by Dr. Jones to nominate Ms. Gray as deputy clerk, Mr. Sternman?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkney S?
Yes.
Mrs. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Next item is item one, possible course that you need in wait. Your current name is on the first and third Monday each month at six. If Monday is a holiday, you will need on Tuesday.
Any desires to change that?
The next item is item two, now with confirmation that you have one person who can sign them.
Pleasure is three minutes for individual, five minutes for group. And we would like to speak to the board.
Blanche Little.
My name is Hannah Jones. I'm a project of Richmond Public Schools. I've been teaching for twenty-nine years, twenty-seven of which have been in Richmond. I'm here tonight because I'm sort of disappointed in actions and the width that it took to do repairs in our school. We had the foulness of overs for two years and the kindergarten era. And finally, it was looked at over two years ago. A teacher was removed from her room last March, came back again. Another teacher had been removed from that room also. It was not a good environment for working, for the children, for the teachers as well. We've had headaches. I have migraines, allergies, and so on. So we were told in October that the teacher had, another teacher had been removed from the room and that they were going to replace the ceiling, which they did over Thanksgiving. And then when we came back, we were told that the other two classes, one of the child working, would be done over winter break. Which basically means the week before we got out for winter break, in four days, we had to pack up our classrooms. If you're a thirty-year teacher, you have accumulation of things. I come in a week before school start just to get my room unpacked. So two days was a rough, was a rough process on myself. We were told there was no money for substitutes, so we had to disperse our children throughout the building, which is not good for the children and myself as well. Now their ceilings have been replaced, so what has been done has to be undone. My classroom has to be unpacked. I'm sixty-one years old. I had back surgery two years ago. This is not good. To me, it's not a safe environment for the children while I'm trying to unpack my room. They are five-year-olds. They're not children that we can just leave to do on their own. I'm hoping that the problem has been resolved. I don't know. Hopefully it is. But my concern is that we've got to do better. RPS is a, RPS is a business. We have got to attend to matters better than this for two years. It's just not acceptable. And I don't think your children would want to be working in an environment, and I know I certainly do not want to. So my concern is that we must, we can, and we should do better.
Here now, let's take the seat aside, Mr. Chairman.
Does anyone else who would like to address the board tonight? Please come forward. Once again, does anyone else who would like to address the board tonight? You were lined up in this first room, Deputy Gray.
Good evening, School Board Chair Coleman, Vice Chair Morrison, Superintendent Benton, and other School Board members. My name is Charlotte Hare, and I'm the president of the Richmond Education Association. As we all know, this is the beginning of a new calendar year and a time when many of us make New Year's resolutions. The English definition of a New Year's resolution is a promise that we make to yourself to start doing something good or stop doing something bad on the first day of the year, like improving your health or lifestyle by becoming more active, going on a diet, eating healthier, or giving up smoking. Resolutions are actually commitments to do something or to stop doing something. This evening, I'm asking each of you to make some New Year's resolutions or commitments to Richmond Public Schools. Number one, reexamine your reason for obtaining the office or position. Spend some time reflecting on your real purpose for wanting your position. Commit or recommit yourself to the true meaning of public service. Number two, prepare a list of priorities for the good of the whole. Be innovative and forward-thinking. Look at the big picture of education, public education, in Richmond Public Schools. Number three, learn all that you can about the issues at hand. Do your homework, study. Number four, treat people the way that you want to be treated at all times. You know the golden rule that we learned? Do unto others as you would have them do unto you. And remember that true leadership is servant hood. I am asking you to make these resolutions or commitments because the children of Richmond deserve nothing less. So be it resolved today, Monday, January fifth, two thousand fifteen, that each of us rededicates ourselves to giving our best to the future of our children. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Marty Jewell. I represent Richmond Coalition for Party Education. The, I wish you all a happy New Year. And saw a signal that we really got a shot to do better. I've seen progress this year. Overall, there's no criticism about your production. We still affirm our support and confidence in Dr. Ben and his events. What we have difficulty is what you all discussed prior to your vote and selection of your office. And in fact, you cut short what I had said because you have acknowledged a behavior, a problem with this board that has not been very, very, very impressive, nor has shown very good light. Decorum is important because the world watches. And over and again, there have been dust-ups that have reflected poorly on the board and the city. Almost, almost at whose turn? Ms. Gray has been at the center.
Mr. Jewell?
Thank you, sir.
Well.
Can I personally attack?
Not in the text.
Or would you like?
I can't call a name?
This is correct.
You get my call. Mrs. T.T. Pinkney S. You certainly called. And you, you have sanctioned her. She has acknowledged her fault, yet the level of damage done, I submit, may be far less than what has been done otherwise. And as you have sanctioned her, we urge you to sanction the others. We ask for fair and balance. That should be the order of the day. I don't condemn the board, but when an incident occurred, the whole board was present. You all heard it. It was your duty to handle that matter right there and that. And so we urge you to be fair and balanced as you meet up your sanctions and your sentence. And a good place to start this New Year, would be to do so as early as possible. Thank you.
Good evening, Honoreables. My name is W. Stephen Willborn from the Third District, Mr. Bowman's district. I was going to use my three minutes to say some things, but right now, I feel two places removed by sitting in the back. I don't know how many people typically attend the School Board meetings, but as a taxpayer, as a citizen of the City of Richmond, I'm disappointed that I'm not able to sit in the main room to see the faces of you who are speaking and to really feel more engaged. So I'm just, I'm really disappointed in that. And I would hope that in future meetings, that that would be changed on my thirty-fifth year in higher education. So education certainly is a priority to me, but this, I just feel let down based on the dynamics of the way these meetings set up. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, my Vice Chair, Superintendent, my name is Charles Willis from the Eighth District. First of all, I'd like to also say Happy New Year to each and every one of you all. It's been a challenging year for some of us, and as a community advocate for the haves and the have-nots, I stand before you today with a couple of things I want to share with you on a personal note. In the last couple of months, there have not been moments where I can stand before you and say I'm very pleased that some of the things that have taken place. But I am going to stand before you and say that one of the most favorite songs that I enjoy and I try to live my life by, when I served under the former Superintendent, Dr. Patricia Khan, they asked me, what song would I use to model myself? And I spoke of the song Michael Jackson, "The Man in the Mirror." If there's going to be a change, then we need to look at ourselves first. So I'm not going to stand here and point fingers and say who did what, or who was not pleased, naming that myself, but I am going to stand here before you today and say that a change has come today, starting with me. When I come before this board and I think about my children and myself that was educated through Richmond Public Schools, I think about the opportunities that was afforded to me, that I would like to see our same young folks have that same opportunity, if not a much greater one. I sit there today, this morning, and watch the ribbon cutting of a brand-new high school. I was very excited and very delighted to see that happen because I remember back in serving as bylaw chair for the Richmond Council of PTAs. That was something that we initiated right here before this room to build schools now. And I'm happy that the mayor took that initiative and the board members here saw fit to see that dream come true. So I say to you that my purpose coming before this board will always be because of the children. I don't want to walk away taking anything personal from anyone. If there's anything that I've said to any board member through email, calls, or even in passing, that has not been in a gauge that would be for the better of being a upright gentleman in the City of Richmond, then I apologize. I cannot apologize for my passion to want to see the best of Richmond Public Schools. Dr. Ben spoke with me earlier today, and I, I really, I walked away with a little tear in my eye at Dr. Ben because it takes a man to stand up and say, hey, let's, let's come together and reason. And I wanted to do the same thing, but I just didn't know how. So I just thank you for least, least reaching out. And that's how we have to start. And I say to the board members in my last four seconds, let's reach out to do better because I shall win. Thank you, God bless you.
Happy New Year to all. Dr. Ben, Sherman, Coleman, and Vice President Ms. Morrison, and School Board members. I'm going to make this short and quick because like the gentleman said, this are overflowing two rooms, and it's very, very hot. And I think that as us-
Ma'am, I'm sorry, can you say anything?
Mariah White. And like he was saying, I think that these meetings, when they are overcrowded, they need to be in the chamber. And I think also they need to be televised also. But I came here just to talk a little bit about the Richmond Public School Academic Improvement Plan. I did look at that. And I would hope for, when you look at it as a whole, as a board, that you also look at it in the five themes, that it does not focus on the community or the parents as it should, and that a community task force should be included somewhere in there. This year, my plan is to be here in every meeting. This is the year that I did say that what- This is the year that I did say that once I retire, I will focus on all our children, not just some schools, but all schools. Because in this plan, I see that it is focusing more so on our leaderships and our principals. You want a whole lot out of them, so I expect that by this year, they should get some type of raise increase, and the teachers also. Also in this plan, I have a little problem about the RPS Academic Improvement Plan, draft payout schedule. Seems to me that the high schools go a lot later than the elementary schools. Seems like it should be reversed. To me, that's promoting truancy to me. And in this plan also, in improving our students, I've seen a plan for every school, but I would like to see a more in-depth plan for ACDC schools. I don't think that these students, how much success have they made at the alternative school? I think there needs to be a plan, a contract with each student or something, to get them up to speed. They shouldn't have to stay in one school until they decide that, I guess, they get ready. It's time for our students to have quality education, and I know that's what you're promoting this year, but I would like to see every student receive that quality education, no matter what predicament they are in and what type of school they're in. Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to address the board tonight? Please report. It's time. All right, Madam Chair.
The next item on the agenda is item three, informational force and ideas for action. Three point zero one is to receive for action a resolution requesting use of city council chambers for the two thousand fifteen school board meetings. Those, that resolution was posted on board's outs for your review, and it is just a resolution we sent to council after your organizational meeting, asking that we can use chambers for the meetings on the first and third Monday of each one, and those dates are listed in the resolution.
The adoption of the resolution, Mr. Chair. Mr. Born made the motion to adopt the resolution to request the use of council chambers, and it's seconded by Ms. Harris Mohammed. Mr. Sturtevant?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinky Epps?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
And Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. The next item is three point zero two, receive the academic improvement plan.
Board members, I want to give an introduction while Mrs. Kane prepares to come up. The state of Virginia, we're in a challenging, but also promising time. Back in two thousand two, two thousand three school year, the state of Virginia had a record six hundred and forty-eight schools not fully accredited. In two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, there was a low of nineteen. As of this past year, we will find a upswing against five hundred and seventy-one schools not fully accredited currently. The state itself outlines marked changes in raising of the bar and standards that are going to be required for schools to be successful. Most significantly, I would tell you that the state has moved out with its current leadership and Secretary of Ed, acknowledging that poverty and other external barriers are creating challenges. In fact, the profile of a priority school in the state of Virginia is an average of eighty-four percent premium use lunch, and eighty-eight percent minority, all centered around urban environments. So in essence, priority status is a label of poverty. With that being said, no one in this room, I believe, no one in administration, no one in the board disagrees about the need for us, as an academic institution, to be committed to beating the same bar as any other school in the state of Virginia. What we are asking each person to acknowledge is that every student will arrive at the same point in time. In fact, the state is now, they're acknowledging that situation, and having conversations about the need to recognize schools and teachers for making progress. Upon my selection of superintendent of school in Richmond Public Schools, I was charged by both the board and the city council to oversee the development of a multi-year academic improvement plan. With nice presentation, our academic services team, which is part of the reason why the room is so crowded and full, because this was a multi-person, disjointed process in the school district. It is my hope that the board, the mayor, and the city council embrace this plan as a step forward in building a better district. The purpose of academic improvement plan is accelerate progress of all student groups. And I say progress, Richmond Public Schools is meeting or exceeding the target standards. The goal of the work conducted by the team is to increase academic achievement and reduce achievement gaps between and among all student groups. This plan has been developed around five core practice areas, grounded in research-based practices of ACT's National Center of Education and Achievement. In fact, it was the same five core areas that the State Board of Virginia was so impressed with, that we were building our plan on this to date brand additional accreditation to three of our schools. The plan outlines district-level, school-level, and classroom-level actions around five areas. Student learning, which is about expectations and goals related to academic programs. Staff selection, which is centered on leadership and capacity building. Our instructional tools, which is about programs and strategies to be used to promote teaching and learning. The monitoring aspect, which is analysis and the use of data, and then the recognition, innovation, and adjustment. Each core practice level, action plan, and deliverables were developed by a team approach. Prior to establishing the deliverables, the teams considered the current state of our system in terms of student performance, to collect the professional capacity of our teachers and administrators. Features of the current strategic plan adopted by the previous leadership that are relevant to improving teaching and learning. In essence, we also try to honor the past, and move it forward and connect it to the future. We also look at the structures and systems already in place that will accelerate improvement in teaching and learning. As you receive the presentation tonight, please remember that this plan is also one part of a great meeting of Richmond Public Schools. It is a piece of the puzzle, is what I'm saying. It is not the complete package and the end-all, be-all. The other parts that are significant, that still have to be addressed, and should be included in our thought process, is the facility modernization, our technology infrastructure, our transportation need, program upgrades, and continued investment in human capital. Without appropriate funding for the plan, and our other areas previously mentioned, the goal of increasing academic achievement will either be significantly reduced, or most likely not met and achieved. As we move into the budget process, we will certainly be faced with some tough choices. A major part of this improvement plan focuses on building staff capacity by doing things differently. And it is a heavy investment actually in teachers and staff, not just leadership. I ask the RPS family, both internal and external, to be willing and open to doing things differently, not because something was done wrong in the past, so we will not point blank, but because the needs of our students have changed, and continue to change, and we must change to meet their needs. I want to thank the academic services team, administrators, and staff that participated in this process that are listed in the documents, and for accepting the challenge that I gave them, and accepting the mission as not being impossible. I'll say thank you, and I will introduce to you, Ms. Andrea Kane, Associate Superintendent of Academic Services, to present to you the summary and the PowerPoint that are attached in the board docs, is a twenty-nine page document I would like to get into our apartment. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. At long last, we get to hear about the academic improvement plan. As Dr. Bennet mentioned, this plan is one piece of a systemic improvement. So this represents the best thinking of a variety of educators, many of whom are in this room or adjoining room this evening. Some of our community partners had a part of this, and really, we took a lot of recommendations from the community, and as we received communication and interaction with our parents, and they made suggestions to us, or they pointed out areas that needed improvement to us, we made sure that we incorporated those things into this plan. Because, as you know, we are not here to place blame, but we are here to move forward with structures that are going to help our district move forward. And so this plan represents the highlights of those, of that thinking. So what you read over the holiday break was the proposed plan itself, where you're going to hear tonight, represents a summary of our priorities. Of course, our purpose for implementing this plan is to establish a multi-year comprehensive plan, designed to facilitate the acceleration of student progress for all students in meeting or exceeding those target standards. Of course, we look at education not only as a piece of, a part of our lives, really, of students' lives, that's absolutely critical to moving them forward, but we also consider it our duty to ensure that children recognize not only their place in the world, but their significance in the world. And education certainly is a huge part of that. We start and we end our academic improvement plan with students in mind. Students come first, and students really are at the center of all of the decision-making that has been involved with creating this plan. So we've shared with you a couple of scenes from our first school year, or the current school year, academic and extracurricular. And then we move forward to why we believe this plan is important, why we need to have an academic improvement plan. Of course, we were tasked with this, we were charged with this by Dr. Bennet, but also, we've provided for you a snapshot of some of the data. Your actual plan has a significant amount of data in that, which includes end-of-year data points from last year, for reading, for math, early childhood, PSAT, SAT, so forth. But we wanted to point out to you some of the most significant pieces of data. So we're going to share with you third grade and eighth grade reading and math data, as well as some early childhood data. What I want you to notice is the colors, and I know that the people in the back of the room and in the adjoining room may not be able to see any of the numbers, so just to give you an idea, the colors in green represent the advanced pass rate on SOLs, and this data is for reading. The yellow represents proficient pass rates, and the red represents a failing pass rate. As you can see, for two thousand ten to two thousand twelve, our data was just fairly good. We had a number of students who were performing at the advanced level, and far less students performing at the failing rate. As the standards increased in rigor, now we have a bit of a change. So we see far less students in the advanced categories, and far greater students at the In the area of mathematics, the data looks very similar. So we look at third grade and then eighth grade mathematics, and you can see that there are far less students after those standards changed, that are performing in the advanced categories, and far greater students that are performing at the fail, at the fail rates. Now, what you'll notice in particular, for both third grade and for eighth grade mathematics, there seems to be a decrease in the students who are performing at the fail rate, and we certainly recognize that we, that's an accomplishment, but we definitely have far greater to go, because as you can see, the fail rate is overwhelming. This data represents aggregate data for PALS, and that's the executive awareness assessment. We administer that assessment historically for kindergarten through third grade. This year, we added fourth grade and fifth grade to that, to that assessment. And what you notice here in particular for, this is from spring two thousand thirteen, fourteen, to fall two thousand fourteen, what you notice is that we are not maintaining our students at benchmark, and that represents the students who are proficient in identifying letters and sound phonetic awareness, for our older students for reading comprehension, reading comprehension and fluency. So for example, for the fifth graders in two thousand fourteen, we noticed that over forty percent of our fifth graders are not performing at benchmark in terms of reading comprehension and fluency, and with timed reading passages. Again, I won't go into great detail with this, because Dr. Bennet has already talked about those core practices. Just a reminder that this plan is based upon the framework for the five core practices. It's important to recall that the work really is divided into a couple of different categories, as Dr. Bennet mentioned, and that is district-level work, school-level work, and classroom-level work. And you will notice acronyms, DL for district-level, SL for school-level, and then CL for classroom-level So I'll go ahead and get started. What we've done is, we have discussed really the priorities, or the big ideas of each of those five themes, each of those five core practice areas. For theme one, student learning and expectations and goals, our focus really will be on building robust online curriculum, with resources that teachers need and use every day. In order to encourage a spirit of innovation and collegiality, we'll host our first curriculum writing academy, or institute. At that institute, we'll train our teachers to write curriculum that's innovative, that's relevant, inclusive of multiple perspectives. A variety of resources will be provided, to include progression or articulation charts, which really help us to map or move students through a sequence of courses to increase the rigor as they go up in grade level. Lesson plans, best practices for instruction, samples, schedules for PLCs, or professional learning communities, and co-teaching models for exceptional education, and ELL instruction will definitely be included in the work of theme one. Also for theme one, we'll include protocols for utilizing specific data points, and those data points are going to be used to help us determine our academic progress across the school district. So currently, we look at different pieces of data. Some schools might look at certain data, other schools look at, you know, other pieces of data, but what we need to do is, we need to all have a common understanding of what it is that we mean when we say this school is performing effectively, or proficiently, or in an advanced level. So we'll identify what those data points are. We'll make sure that teachers and administrators have professional development in how to analyze those data points, so that they can make data-driven decisions about instruction. When, how, and from whom we need to make adjustments to instruction. And that's going to be based on their student performance. So we'll use those measurements not only to determine our progress, submitting our goals and eliminating gaps, but we'll also use those data points to direct the work of those volunteers and those tutors who are in our buildings, helping to instruct students. In order to more closely align the needs of the students based on those data points that we create, we'll help us to identify professional development topics, and to monitor our progress. All schools will write school improvement plans based on our district priorities, as well as the individual needs of each school. Theme two, this one involves staff selection, leadership, and capacity building, and no doubt, it has drawn significant attention, there is a dollar figure attached to this work. At the core, though, I'd like to remind you that it focuses on professional development. You'll hear professional development mentioned again and again and again throughout the presentation, and that is absolutely intentional. Research and experience tells me, and the rest of the folks that have worked on creating this plan, that our greatest resource is our teachers. Our instructional staff is our greatest resource. They impact whatever happens to children, instructionally. And so we must invest in them. Investing in professional development is absolutely essential to improving teaching and learning, and I cannot say that enough, I'll say it again and again. What you'll notice is that there will certainly be flexibility in professional development, but there will also be a core of sections or titles and topics that really are critical to everyone. So you'll see classroom management, you'll see literacy and numeracy strategies. So you'll see classroom management, you'll see literacy and numeracy strategies, data analysis, cultural competency, certainly customer service for our support folks. All of those things are critical, and we believe that those are core. Now, when schools identify that they have specific needs with literacy or with numeracy, they will sort of customize the professional development that happens in their buildings. So there will be some consistency across district, across the district, but that does not preclude schools from customizing the professional development that they need based on their student performance and the needs of their instructional staff. The third item is a big one, and that regards standardizing the school day and the school year for students and teachers to comply with Virginia Code 22.1-302. And I've included that in your presentation today for your reference. And what that does is that gives us more time for instruction, more time to invest in professional development. And what we also included is a draft bell schedule that will actually add some minutes to the school day for students for instruction. I want to just give you an idea of what we're talking about. So number four talks about making recommendations to the calendar. It's all associated, it's all, it all works together. So if we increase or standardize the number of days throughout the school year, we'll gain a number of minutes, and we've got that in this presentation. So we're looking at from two hundred to two hundred and twenty-five minutes per week or over three hours per week on a two-hundred-day schedule for teachers. That will increase professional development time. When we look at that, we also are talking about increasing time before the school year begins, during the school year, and after the school year ends for students. So we'll have embedded throughout the course of the school year opportunities to not only learn about new strategies and skills that teachers need to improve teaching and learning, but they'll also have opportunities to practice those skills and to collaboratively plan for how they're going to adjust and monitor instruction for students. Throughout that time, we'll also, we were proposing that we want to create some hours for work time for teachers. So at the end of every marking period, we'd like to allow teachers some opportunity to calculate grades and to write comments and things like that for report cards because that's critical. We want to be sure that parents are informed, and we want to be able to give teachers the amount of time that it takes to really be in, get into detail and to inform parents so that they really understand how their children are performing in schools. Most, most of all, we want to look at creating that consistency in our, in our school district. So you'll notice that. We'll come back to that. So this is the actual language from the code, and we've identified or pointed out some of the critical parts we want you to pay attention to. And for the most part, we're looking at standardizing that ten-month contract to include two hundred days. We already have the minimum one hundred and eighty teaching days, so we're fine there. But we want to be able to include, and it says up to twenty days for activities such as teaching, participation in professional development, the planning that I referenced before, evaluating, completing records and reports, that has to do with the teacher's work time, participating in committees or attending conferences. All of those things are critical to the extra time that's needed. This is the draft bell schedule, and we do say draft. It is a proposal because we feel that it is also critical. We have had conversations and conversations long before I joined Richmond Public Schools about the research around the high school start time. This proposal addresses that. So we're looking at from eight to two fifty for elementary schools, a thirty-three twenty for middle schools, and nine to three fifty for high schools. Now, this is going to recognize some increased time for instruction, which each of them will have approximately six hours and fifty minutes for instruction across each level. It'll provide some consistency with the same schedule. Right now, we have some elementary schools starting much earlier than others. Some elementary schools are in a high school schedule, some elementary schools. So it's going to provide consistency so that all elementary schools are on the same schedule, just like all middle and all high will be on the same schedule. This has the potential to improve transportation operations. And we also, you know, recognize the research behind those start times. It is still undetermined. Right now, we're doing our homework on the availability of before and after care for students at the elementary school level because that is critical to this. We're looking at the impact on that. And we're also looking at the impact on after-school athletics at the high school level. So there is certainly more work that needs to be done. But we want to make you aware of our, of our proposal. Continuing with the ideas, the big ideas for theme two, we would like to add an FTE one position to our professional development office to help to facilitate the many, many, many opportunities for professional development across the district. So that's for teachers and administrators, that's for mentor teachers, support staff, tutors, coaches, and volunteers. We are proposing that we do professional development for all of our volunteers and coaches, anyone who is going to be interacting instructionally with our students because we have to ensure that we are all on the same page in terms of recognizing what students need to move forward. We're looking at developing teacher and administrator cohorts to build their professional capacity as well as to increase employee retention. Because that is critical to feel like you belong to a cohort of folks that you can dispounce ideas off of and really understand what word lies ahead of you. We looked at the same type of idea and proposed tiering of leadership cohorts, and that's looking for some support for aspiring administrators, new as well as experienced administrators. And part of that work is going to include professional development around interator reliability for our evaluators of teachers. And what that recognizes is that we are extremely proficient in understanding the professional practices that are required of teachers. So when I go in to evaluate as a principal, a teacher, I understand as well as my colleague who is across town what highly effective is. So I'm at one high school, and I am going to use the same lens, use the same set of evidence to evaluate teachers as my other colleagues. We've all got to be on the same page with that. Teachers appreciate that level of consistency and the evidence and understanding the evidence that's required to be at the highest rating. And principals appreciate that consistency. So that is part of this work. And finally, for theme three, for theme three, we're looking at varying the responsibilities of leadership team members. We're talking about cross-training, again, more professional development so that our assistant principals and aspiring leaders are able to assume the roles and responsibilities of principals when they come available so that we are building our bench, is what this one is about. We're going to be recommending guidelines for assigning some of the most effective teachers and administrators to the schools with the greatest needs. All the research says that the most experienced or the most highly proficient teachers and administrators are most effective with students with the greatest needs. And so we want to respond to that. We're going to be designing and implementing annual parent and community involvement conferences focused on academics, how to increase student achievement outside of the schoolhouse, certainly some ideas for parenting and obtaining family resources. What we're looking at doing is moving this parent-community involvement conference and these work sessions across the city so that parents at each part of the city are involved and have an opportunity to participate in sessions that are here toward them and their students and understand what their students are doing in school and how they can help at home because that's what parents want to know. I think that's also important so that you, as board members, don't feel compelled to have to do these things in isolation because we want to focus on systemic improvement and not isolated. So that should be a great help for our reports. Of course, we want to expand our recruitment efforts. Dr. Bennet mentioned this a little bit earlier, to reflect a more diverse workforce and the enrollment that we currently have increasing with Latino students. So we're looking at recruiting differently for our Latina teachers. We're looking at recruiting at historically Black colleges and universities, expand the recruitment efforts that we have had. We're looking for teachers who are experienced or certainly have a desire to work in an urban school district. As we all know, urban school districts have specific needs that not all school districts have, challenges, and we want to be sure that we are recruiting from the right places and hiring the right folks with specialized skill sets to work with our students. So we move on to theme three. And theme three is about the programs, the tools and the structures to support the teaching and learning. Most importantly, what you'll see from theme three is the building of robust course offerings, and that includes core and elective courses. So part of the work for theme one and theme three are very, very aligned, they're highly integrated. So we're looking at goals for theme one, but we're looking at how we're going to get that work accomplished in theme three. So those are the programs that are going to improve study skills, and, and those are some of the, building some of those courses that students have an interest in, high interest, not just the core courses that students have to take. But we want to build schedules that improve the likelihood of students having opportunities to take electives. So we're looking at developing a culture of academic rigor, and we'll have that evidence by creating those college-going environments in our schools at all levels, and then certainly increasing those opportunities for blended learning. All of those programs that support instruction and 21st century skills are incorporated in theme three work. Also for theme three, we're looking at establishing guidelines. Part of this work is about establishing the structures, again, that need to be put in place so that we can make improvements in our school district. So we're looking at creating guidelines for review and evaluation of all instructional materials. We certainly do believe in a level of autonomy for teachers, but as we all know, we have been cited by VDOE as not having a, an alignment between what is taught in school, in the classrooms, and what is expected from the academic standards. So we have to be sure that we have a review and evaluation process in place that's going to include software, the review and evaluation of software, so we can ensure that what we put in front of children, the experiences that we engage them in to learn are aligned to standards, the academic standards. And so that is included here, as well as guidelines for intervention and enrichment. For academics, anything instructional is part of that, implementing programs and utilizing tools with fidelity because as we create programs or engage our students in programs, we have to be sure that we're implementing with fidelity because when we don't, we jeopardize our progress in that area. And again, you'll see the plan for hosting district-wide parent-community involvement workshops that are focused on these programs and in general, focused on academics and improving teaching and learning. We move on to theme four. A big idea around theme four, the monitoring compilation and analysis and use of data. A lot of the work for theme four is certainly associated with the work in themes one and three, and they have to do with collecting and analyzing data and creating those guidelines for the analysis of data and then what we do next. So we've got the data, we've said where kids are performing, so now what do we do? So this team is working on putting structures in place to help lead teams through that data analysis process so that they can begin to understand where they need to make changes in instruction. And so that it is a formalized process, and all of our schools will understand what it is and what's expected of them as we move forward in the process. Also, if you look at the fourth item, you'll see that we're talking about establishing a process for implementing instructional rounds, that's and collaborative walkthroughs, post-walkthrough debriefings. What instructional rounds are, if you are not familiar, it's based on the Metaphold model for metaphor rounds, and schools identify a problem of practice, and colleagues and support staff are in the buildings and they are observing instruction and they're interacting with teachers and students and the leadership team, and they are giving feedback to the principal and the leadership team as to how they may make adjustments to instruction to improve not only student performance, but to improve educator performance as well. And that is an ongoing process. That is going to be the basis for job-invented professional development. So it starts there, we give time to make improvements, come back and monitor, and schools are put in charge of their own progress there. So they're identifying their significant problems and working through it with colleagues to make improvements to teaching and learning. Also, for theme four, you'll see that we're going to be focused on ensuring the security and confidentiality of student data as well as the accuracy of student data and employee records, that's critical. As we've identified the data points that we're going to use, we want to be sure that they are absolutely accurate and that we understand how to analyze that. We're going to be making some revisions to our assessment and grading policy to ensure that we are consistent across our district. We recently had a parent who, and I hope that the parent has an opportunity to see that we are addressing this in our plan because some of our schools currently use end-of-year assessment data in many, 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 many different ways. And so some schools are actually assigning a numerical value and a grade to SOLs. So we have to create a level of consistency. We have to decide what it is that we're going to do in terms of all of our assessments and create consistency across the district in how we're going to hold students, teachers, all of us accountable for that information. So that's included here. We're going to have to inventory all of our programs and diagnostic assessments, our interventions, which we've got a multitude. So we've got to get a handle on what those programs are and then determine which ones are most effective for us that are going to benefit our students. We're going to be sure to make sure that everyone participates in professional development in terms of writing SMART goals, data analysis, monitoring instruction and data. All of those things are included, again, professional development. As we move on to the fifth theme for intervention and adjustment, you'll notice that we have really, really focused on intervention and ensuring that we have established criteria for participation in intervention and the threshold to move students out of an intervention. And so what we've got going on currently is we have a lot of students, a grand majority of our student population are in an intervention. And it seems from looking at the data that we have that many students are in an intervention, and they never progress out of an intervention. And so this work in theme five is going to ensure that we've established clear criteria for a student in being enrolled in a particular intervention and what it takes for that student to be moved out of the intervention. We'll have to develop rubrics to determine the effectiveness of those intervention programs and so that we can monitor those. We certainly have to ensure that we've provided the professional development that's necessary for our teachers to accurately identify and diagnose learning deficits, more professional development. We'll have to make sure that they prescribe the appropriate intervention, understand what it takes to monitor and interpret that intervention data so that we can appropriately move students as progress allows. We're going to establish the expectation, again, for fidelity of implementation because we can have some of the best programs in the world, but if we are not implementing with fidelity, it is really for naught. So, and that involves, that includes, I should say, acceleration because all of our students are not at a deficit. We have students that need to be pushed, some students that are performing quite well but have the potential to perform even better. So we have to make sure that we are focusing on acceleration programs as well as intervention. Also in theme five, you'll see that there is a focus on collaboration time so that we have increased accountability and responsibility for core academic and expanded core teachers. Everyone is responsible for literacy and numeracy instruction regardless of what you teach, not just SOL-based teachers. So we want to ensure that there's an understanding there and teach teachers So we want to ensure that there's an understanding there and teach teachers how to include literacy and numeracy in their instruction every day. We're going to be monitoring lesson plans, providing meaningful feedback. We're going to certainly establish clear roles, this is important, clear roles and responsibilities for our community partners, so that they understand the process that we're going to use to evaluate the work that they're doing and their alignment to making measurable gains for our students. In other words, we want to be sure that what our, our partners are doing in schools is effective and is making a difference. We're going to be creating a transition program for overage students to accelerate learning, beginning with middle and high school students. This one is a relatively big-ticket item, and that one requires some, some, some post scrutiny, because we're being held accountable, as the young lady who spoke earlier about ACDC is what she called it, but our alternative programs to ensure that we've addressed all of our students, and certainly this plan acknowledges that need and, and addresses that. So that's part of that work as well. And as part of that, we're going to be expanding our credit acceleration and credit recovery options for students that are going to be taking high school courses. We're going to be sure that we have demonstrated incremental growth, as Dr. Bedden talked about in his introduction, to ensure that we are giving credit where credit is due. All of our students are not going to meet the mark at the same time. That's how children and adults learn. Everybody doesn't learn in the same way, and everybody does not learn in the same time. So we want to acknowledge growth and progress toward those benchmarks that have been set for us. And also, we're going to be looking for incremental increase as well in our parent involvement, our community involvement, programs and, and offerings. And certainly, we want to make sure that we are celebrating our successes and that we begin, end, and center all of our decisions on students and what is best and right for students and to increase student achievement. What you, what you see before you is the summary you have in your plan, the plan that you read over the, the winter break, the detailed summary, budget summary. As with all budgets, the largest cost and most important investment is in developing human capital, as we've talked about. So five to six million dollars of a yearly cost, you see sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen before you, is really centered on those nine days for professional development with compensation. Now, as the board, you'll have to decide whether or not you want to provide compensation. Possibly, as we really are complying with Virginia Code, you could just say, we're going to do without compensation, with compensation, or something else that you may come up with, provide possibly some other option. It could be part of compensation. You really will have to make the call for that. We've given you the information so that you're armed with that as you make your decision, because it is certainly a big one and it's an important one, but we cannot ignore the significance of providing that much-needed and really essential professional development. And much of our ability to implement this academic improvement plan is really going to depend on funding provided by the city, given the board will also have to present funding requests associated with facilities, with technology, transportation, increasing special education. We do recognize that this is not the only thing that you have to consider. It is a part of our district-wide systemic improvement, so we certainly recognize that. We wanted to give you all the information. And of course, the last slide here represents a summary of the staffing as we've broken them out from fiscal years sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, as you read in the plan over the break, and just the dollar amount that's associated with that. And we certainly want to end with a quote. And it's very appropriate for our time. It's easier to build strong children than repair broken men. That is certainly a more costly option. This is our best thinking at this time. I want to conclude with a couple of things, and one first is that this plan, while it is comprehensive, it does not include every single task that we're going to do over the next several years to improve teaching and learning in our school district. However, it does represent the best thinking of those most significant priorities. So we want to put that out there. And we also recognize that it is a draft. We recognize that there may be some additions, that you may have some ideas that we want to include in this plan, and we are certainly open to that. At this time, I'm going to ask my colleagues, who are the project managers for each of these themes, to come join me at the front before we entertain questions. So we have Teri Perkins, who is our director for curriculum and instruction. Teri had the esteemed pleasure of leading teams one and three, because they are so closely related to curriculum and curricular programs and learning goals. It was just easier if we had one person to do that, as she did with Wisconsin. Thank you, Teri. We have Darlene Curry, who is the project manager for theme two, with all of those ideas about professional development and staff selection and leadership. And we're out of order, so I'm going to, so there we go. So Teri was team one and three. And then we have Janet Garland, who is our executive director for school improvement, and team four led that work with Dana Richardson. And certainly, last but not least, we have Michelle, Dr. Michelle Boyd, who is executive director for exceptional education and a whole lot of other things, among the student support services, and led the work with Dr. Leonard for team five. So at this time, we would like to entertain any questions that you may have. I am going to yield to my colleagues here, as they have some details that I may not have, because they were obviously leaving the work in each of their meetings, and I was not able to attend all, all their meetings, but they'll be able to answer my questions. So might I open the floor to questions?
Boyd, follow along, just follow. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This came, team, thank you so much for all the work and insight into this. This is a plan and roadmap that we've been waiting for just about 24 months to get. But I'm pleased that it, it has a couple of clues in there and sort of things that I picked out and sort of reviewing this, meaning acknowledges, and I think demonstrates that incremental progress, just isn't getting it, it's not good enough anymore. I think some of the, one of the big things that jumped out at me in sort of reading it is that we're going to be using data proactively instead of reactively. In addition, the chart in there, project organization is critical, and I know Dr. Jones, for one, has always been a stickler of understanding who is responsible for what and what the deliverable timelines are, and so that is a huge, huge plus for this plan. In addition, I think it recognizes that it's not, oftentimes, it's not what you expect or what you expect, and so we expect certain things, but it also does the next step to show that we inspect and hold people accountable. It does, it, it recognizes that we've got to change some of the people that are in the classrooms, in the school buildings, and by change, that doesn't necessarily, you know, have the courageous conversations with, it means change them and improve how they teach or how they administer the building. And, you know, it's going to cause some uncomfortable feelings for you. I mean, going, changing the school calendar, changing the school schedules, I mean, all of this is going to be new and it's going to be difficult, but it's needed, because the time for this type of change, the time for this type of plan is long, bit overdue. And so I could go on and go on and talk about it. But I do have a question. As we move forward with this plan, understanding that it's a draft, but there are some sort of pillars in here, what, what would you suggest or what, what would be beneficial for us as far as sort of check-ins, how the progress is going, what we're seeing data, what we're seeing about the project overall?
Thank you for asking that question. So what, one thing that we will have access to, which we have not had access to in prior years, is a longitudinal data system. And so what we'll be able to do is we'll be able to track our data. Teachers can track data. It'll be in a central location, multiple forms of data, and that'll allow us to make better decisions about children as a whole. And so what we might ask of you is that we provide some of those reports to you, as we're going to be asking, schools will be on a timeline. And so there will, there will be expectations for schools to collect, to analyze, and to report data at specific times of the school year. So we'll ask that you be privy to that information, and you certainly want to be on top of it and, and monitor, just as we do. There will be opportunities for you to join professional development, because you want to have the same language that we have, as we're talking about our effectiveness. And so we'll open those opportunities up for you as well. Certainly, you want to be a part of understanding the, at least the aggregate and how our teachers and how our administrators are performing, and how we are supporting the work that is occurring at the school. So we'd be happy to provide not only the data that schools will report, but also updates for you.
Follow, follow. One of the things, this is some question, the project teams that worked on this, I'm trying to find the page, it seems like that this has been sort of a collaborative effort. I mean, I see teachers and structural specialists, principals. So I, I'm going to assume, and I don't do that a whole lot, that there has been buy-in at sort of every level, even despite some of the significant changes for the, what has been the norm here, Mr.?
It has been a, really a wonderful process, and, and I've used this process many times before. It does allow for the collaboration, but one thing that always happens is when we first start the plan, folks begin to understand how exciting and how important this work is, because there are so many opportunities to make improvements, that we kind of get hung up in the beginning, because everybody has ideas about where we need to start, and we have to really start to narrow our focus. But that enthusiasm, that energy, our folks, our principals, our teachers, our support staff, they brought that with them. And so, yes, it has been a collaborative effort, and, and everybody's idea didn't make it to this presentation. Everybody's idea didn't make it to the plan that you read, but certainly, we've considered those things that we feel are going to be most critical in moving us forward.
Just go on.
A couple of questions. I really appreciate the time, the collaboration, and the effort that you all put into this plan, because it takes more than one person to present a district improvement plan. So one person cannot be held accountable for all these parts that you have that are coming together to make the wheel move. Okay, so I really, I just want you all to know that. In the past, which I don't speak much of the past, but this is one of very few times that I've had, we've been presented by one person or from one person. Then we address it to one person. So now we see the faces and the bodies that are held accountable for these pieces, and as a board, we're going to do that. Hold you accountable for what you've just presented to us. So I appreciate you not taking on the entire gamut of this school improvement. So, I gotta say, all that over? And I really appreciate that you tell me, Mr. Coleman. Say that all over again, Mr. Coleman. So I have some concerns. One of the concerns is that, and I think in the plan, it does indicate what some of our challenges have been, what they continue to be. When I look at the data, because I'm a, I'm a data-driven person, but I also appreciate that data is not the only thing that drives instruction. So reading, we know that our K through five or the PALS areas where we've given the PALS, those students are doing well. So there is an issue, I mean, according to the data, they're doing well. I'm looking at the green, the yellow, and the red, so a majority of our students, no. Okay, let me, let me, let me go to the PALS. I was just on the PALS. Okay, so I see more green than gray on, on the PALS. So when I said yellow, I was on the wrong one, I'm sorry. So I see more green than I see red, which, which says to me that we have students that are reading on or above greater. Is, is that, is that a safe statement to make?
That is a safe statement to make, however, I need you to take a look at the numbers that are associated with the bars. And we have far too many students. When we are upward of 20% of our students that are not meeting benchmark, we are way over. Think of it, think of a pyramid, and you should, certainly in the beginning or, or middle of the school year, not have any more than 15% of your students not meeting the benchmark. As the year progresses, it should be even less.
So, and these numbers are growing. Okay, okay, so I see that, and I wanted you to, that's what I wanted to hear from you, so I appreciate that. So I'm sure you all have a plan to address the percentage of why those numbers are increasing. So now, we can, we can pretty, we can safely say that middle school is not the only issue, because that's what we have been saying. Okay, so that's my other issues, my other question, I'll be emailed to you since we have a deputy clerk, and it's really on her job. So I will, and the other, can I just say this very quickly? I, I really need for us to have some clarity on how every school will address. If a student passes their SOL, so we're going to give them an A. You all know where I'm going. So if they don't pass the SOL, so we give them an F. So how, you know, every school is doing that differently, so I think I heard you say we have some consistency.
Yes, ma'am.
Because we get a flood of calls.
I'm sure.
In May and June, because it's not consistent, you know, this child is doing something at John Marshall, this teacher then over somewhere else, it's not the same. I would like for us to know that. What are you all planning to do?
And honestly, in not taking your time, though.
It's already gone, girl.
So honestly, and, and I can't fault anyone for that, because when there is not a guideline, if there is not some type of a directive, then folks do what they feel like is best. And so what I feel like may be best can be different from what you might feel is best. And so we just have to create the guideline, set the expectation, and monitor to ensure the consistency that we implement.
That's great.
I'm really excited about this plan, and I want to thank you. That was quite an in-depth presentation, so it was a lot to take in. And Mr. Bourne said, we've been waiting for 24 months, but as a parent of over 20 years in RPS consistently, this is, this is really incredible to hear, and I'm excited about it. So the one thing that stood out to me is the, the change in bell schedule, which I think will be a positive thing for our high school and middle school students. However, I, as a single parent, I know that there are before and after-school gaps for working parents who may not be able to afford childcare, who depend upon the older siblings. So I would like to see where the gaps are, what we can do, and I will work with all of you to try to find partners in the community to fill those gaps, because I think it's critical that we not have students unattended in the afternoons and mornings when they're waiting for their classes.
We recognize that as one of the challenges, so we wanted to get the schedule first. Some of them we've had conversations with about being in a meeting with them. Right now, Dr. Leonard and Dr. Boyd are working together to develop a template for each elementary school to respond to the talks about what exists currently in your school, like who is your partner? But more importantly, what, who is it serving? Because we also, should point it out, I didn't know where that, they're not just going to be open to every kid. So there are different focuses, I think, working out there. And then with the costs, and one of your colleagues pointed that out also and asked me a question there, and I said, you know, we may have to come between the council and the board to talk about if quality is the issue, we don't want to give up on quality of our students because of cost. So some of them may have to be asking for money, or you have to subsidize partnerships to get the price down, but still, our parents have some skin in the hay, but to not make it cost-effective, so that, okay, you get a stellar partner, but this other school doesn't get this partner because they can't afford it. So we're having those conversations also, which quite honestly could exist. For us, like one of mine has a sliding scale based on income, but even then, that could be cost-effective. So we're going to make some tough choices in the district too, because all things aren't equal with the level, and we may have to look at title one percentages and say... And we may have to look at Title I percentages and say, okay, this is how we're going to give allocation to students also, so we know that your proposition has a higher need. So it doesn't mean everybody will get the same dollars if they allocate the dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to echo my colleagues' sentiments on this plan. Dedicated, or we opened up news, you got this morning, and as specialist that was, works in order tremendous, but this is really where the rubber meets the road. And so I thank you for the thoughtfulness and for the obvious effort and passion that you put into it. I have a renewed sense of optimism with new ideas, new people, new players presenting this information. And so, so I approach this with, with extreme hope that we're headed in the right direction. Ideas are great, but execution is best. And one of, as, as, and it's so in-depth and certainly raised a few questions for me, and I certainly can't get them all answered here, but one that stuck out to me were, were two basically. Who will be in charge of writing the in-building academic improvement?
The school improvement plans will be written by the leadership team.
By the school?
Of the school, with the support of central office folks that involve content and curriculum, the executive directors that supervise principals, so they will certainly have support. The mannequin's office, the Garland's office for school improvement, all of those things. So schools, they won't be expected. Sometimes what happens with school improvement plans is people think that means they need to get themselves in a room and write this plan, and that is not the intent of a school improvement plan. The intent of the plan is to model the collaboration that you've seen this evening. And so that involves content folks at the school level, that involves different, the whole curriculum folks, that involves the leadership team, that involves parents making instructional and academic decisions, that kind of thing. It's a collaborative effort, not that one person or two people that seem to do all the work all the time, need to sit in a room and create a plan. And that's not the intent.
And timetable, how, in your professional opinion, how long before we can evaluate whether these plans are working? And if we need to shift gears because there's so many moving parts? So, so, you know, what's your timetable before we know if we're doing it right and we need to kind of revisit some things?
In my experience, by the end of October, schools should have a solid draft of their school improvement plan, and I'll tell you why. Because we're going to be asking schools to create a professional development plan for the school year. So as we move forward, the early dismissal days, schools will not be thinking about what they're going to do for professional development right before that day happens. It will be planned and scheduled and absolutely intentional at the beginning of the school year. So they'll have those data points that we've identified are significant and important for determining effectiveness, and they will use those data points. They'll look at certain times in the year when that data is available, and they will plan their professional development around that, and it will be planned throughout the course of the school year. So by October, they should have a solid draft of their school improvement plan. And that plan is really dynamic, and it is a living document, not to be changed every whim because it should be prioritized based on core needs and aligned to the district's priorities. But it will be carried out throughout the course of the school year.
And to end, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask you a follow-up question. In terms of professional development, what methods are we using to address teachers who do not attend professional?
And that is one of our deliverables. So what we've got to do is we've got to get some folks around the table to create some options or some ideas around. We recognize this plan is step one. This plan says what we recognize needs to happen. It is not the work that has happened. So this plan is going to direct us to get a group of people together, key stakeholders, and to really start to hash out what needs to happen, what's vital, what makes sense. So that is a deterrent, but we are, it's not off of your head, that's not the intent. But we want to focus towards the value of other professional development.
But Dr.. Jones, we did have a conversation, some people back here, about, that's come up several times. There's Mahal's raising, you're raising it, that the procedure is meant just so we can track the patterns. That we know things happen. So someone can be sick legitimately, but we also want to be here to assist in place we know the patterns because at the end of the day, if you invest all this time in the time that it happens, and you're not there, it's not going to change. We know that teaching, having, teachers having time to hone their skills or adjust as the standards change, when things happen, they got to reteach themselves and relearn. If they're not there to do it, they're not going to prepare to teach kids. And then they have a chance, they have to have time to practice it, spend time away from kids to reflect, collaborate with colleagues, talk about what's working, what's not, what I need help with, go back, do some more, and keep getting better. But we can't have large skill lapses in both the conversation, delegation team, and building a system that looks for trends also. Like we just put a longitudinal system in place for student data. So we're going to be able to start now tracking our students over time with the system we purchased this year. We have another analytics software that we now have access to, it looks at a lot of things. So we're going to be able to tell a whole lot more. But we also know that that system pushes down to the classroom level. Our teachers are going to have time to learn how to use that system. So they can see more about their kids and learn more, and we can jumpstart a whole lot more with kids starts in next year. So once we roll the data over, teachers will be able to log in and see all 25 kids, what have they done during their tenure in RPS, and not be this, that's just got to figure this kid out.
Mr.. Till, followed by Mrs. Thurman.
Thank you so much for all the work that you've put into this project and planning. And if you could send, I think I said to the board, on behalf of the board, a thank you to all of your administrators who did all of the typing and help organizations and all of that good stuff. So thank you so much for all that you've done. My question, two-part is, one, I hear you saying something more concrete will be in place by sometime in October to progress throughout the year or to, as a stabilizer for the year. Where are we currently on our curriculum and its specific alignment to the school strategy that we come up with?
So we have made, I asked Mrs. Perkins to come up and respond to the question. We have certainly made improvements to our curriculum currently, and teachers are accessing and align curriculum, and I'll have Mrs. Perkins just get to that.
I think the main thing that the specialists did this summer is when they created Pacing Gives, they linked it directly to the state framework. I think, I know lots of Richmond teachers were using the state framework before, but it's a pretty important thing to have it be at your fingertips, to have it be online, to, you can look at it at home. If you're ready to start in a unit, you're looking at the state DOE curriculum framework. So that was one improvement that was made. Teachers are doing a fantastic job writing lots of lesson plans and creating units. One of the, the goals of this plan in doing a curriculum writing institute is to say, all that needs to get in one place and be accessible system-wide. If there's a great fifth grade unit that was created at one school, that needs to be a click of a button so that every teacher could open that up and say, wow, you know, what a great set of resources. Certainly the other thing that's going on now is that there are programs that were purchased, approved by you all, the Benchmark Literacy, Envision Mathematics, those new programs are being used for reading and math in our elementary schools. So there's lots of good work happening. I think we see this as a, a need to bring it all together in one place.
And what kind of feedback are the teachers getting in place specifically to their lesson plans, and how often is that happening?
Well, that's been somewhat of a collaborative effort between schools and our department. Many times an instructional specialist just recently was asked to kind of assist a principal who said, you know, there's one area when I look at lesson plans that I worry that maybe they're not hitting the mark. Would you look at them and give some, some additional feedback? So instructional specialists have certainly assisted, but principals have, as they so often do, carry the lion's share of the work. They and their assistant principals and maybe their lead math or reading people have renewed lesson plans.
And lastly, I question our daughter who's in, in the school systems. Where are we specifically on children having access to their actual grades and parents having access to their grades online? I know that was really delayed with Aspen, and I've been waiting anxiously.
We just, actually I had a meeting before break with a company that we're working with. We're trying to expedite that flipping of the switch process to coincide with the second semester. Maybe we can get an update down to the back and see if we can flip that switch totally and then we'll send it Friday morning. I don't want, I need to check in before I tell you something, I need to say, you told me that and it didn't happen. So let me get an update, we'll send out a Friday morning, and we'll, we'll be able to flip the switch and start the second semester.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to echo all the comments from my colleagues. Thank you all so much for the hard work on this. I really just have one comment that I'm really heartened by. One of the main themes that I heard throughout your presentation and throughout this plan was a laser-like focus on teacher effectiveness. I heard you talk about that as a core principle, and virtually all of the themes came up time and time again. As the husband of a teacher, I've always felt that that is really one of the niches to the success or failure of a parish of public schools, is that sort of accountability and cadre of highly effective teachers in every single classroom that's really going to raise the bar to have strong schools no matter what your situation is. So I'm really heartened to see that that is a philosophy that Dr. Ben and your team have embraced and embody. That's, I think is going to be one of the strongest things in really this law for the school system. So thank you.
Followed by Dr.?
I really want to thank you all for the effort and definitely in putting this academic improvement plan together. I'd like to hear maybe a little bit because... What, what, what do you, based on any data that we have right now? For instance, we're going to be going into second semester, story in February. So with what's going on right now, do you, two questions. Do you see that it will be an easy enough transition to move into this academic plan for the principals and the staff? But how does what is happening in our buildings right now look? Are we improving?
So we have some insight into some measures that we already have, like benchmark data, which, you know, we started the year slow. Every principal in this room will attest to that. Tutors did not come when they expected tutors to come. There were lots of different things that were going on, and I will certainly bear the brunt of that as the lead academic person because I needed to be sure, one, we were in the middle of an RFP process for hiring tutoring firms. And so that is something that won't happen again next year because it's a two-year process, so it'll be taken care of already. But we needed to be certain that what we were doing is effective for children. So rather than continuing practices that have not necessarily been proven effective given the data that we have and we all know about, it was more important that we took our time to understand what was happening and make changes that were going to make sense for children and for teachers. And so it was a bit of a slow start. So there were lots of assessments that were going on in the beginning of the school year, so instructional time was absolutely decreased because of so much assessments going on. And so that had a part in, in what happened in the beginning of the school year. So our benchmark data did not look good. You see our PALS data does not look good. We have lots of opportunities to make improvements here. So we don't have all the structures currently in place that we will have in place once we've implemented this plan or once we've gotten it underway. But we have intentionally designed some opportunities for low-hanging fruit, if you will. So we have already gotten through a lot of the processes for creating some of the progression charts and articulation charts and some of the rubrics that are going to be necessary. Starting to build the professional development that we have to put in place for our volunteers and for our tutors, and we've started some of that. So lots of these things have gotten underway. The planning is really moving forward. So we'll be able to implement some of this quite easily over the spring. And then we begin big pushes for professional development over the summer and throughout next year and the year after that. So there will be some opportunities to move right into the plan, and others are going to take a great deal more organization.
Dr.?
I too would like to thank you for all the hard work that ran into this. I appreciate the collaborative effort, and I think that's really meaningful. I think that, you know, as initiatives have come forward in the past, sometimes it feels really top-down. So I'm happy to see that, you know, lots of stakeholders at the table. And I hope that as we move forward, it continues, that, that teachers feel that way. Because again, there is a past culture that is different, and I think we're constantly fighting against our past culture. And so, as you all know, and so I think just being really conscious of that is important. I think this is kind of a question for Mr. Westbay about the salaries. I feel like at one point I saw a salary chart that showed where we are in our salary scale, but also taking into account the number of days that our teachers are in their contracts compared to, you know, whatever jurisdictions we were comparing ourselves to and the number of days. Do we have that data?
We will have it, it's part of our voice presentation.
Okay, excellent. Okay, that would be great. And then another specific question I had was about the PALS data being used in the third, fourth, and fifth. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, sure. And I'm probably going to lean on some of my colleagues here to, to join in with me. But this year, we used PALS for fourth and fifth grade for the first time, generally it's K through three. And that data, or those assessments have to do with reading comprehension. It's timed, so that also measures a level of fluency. And that is significant because assessments are timed, and it might, it can't take forever because that shows some level of struggle. And so we've got to be sure that our kids are fluent and they're automatic with their reading, and they can go back to a test and understand what they've read and respond to questions, evidence included, and their response is based on what they've read. And that's a skill that may be a bit different. In prior years, our curriculum, our standards have asked us to have children respond to maybe a fictional text and, and give their opinion about what they think a response might be. But in the shift with the standards, students are being asked to read a text that is maybe informational or may not be informational, but they've got to go back to that text and give a text-based response, evidence-based from that text, and then tell the fiction, the facts for why they selected that response. So it's a bit of a shift in the way they have been taught in the past, and that's critical. All of that is part of that assessment. So it's a bit different. And given that this was the first time we've done that, I'm sure that has something to do with the results that we got, but it does come forth with some of the other assessment results that we've gotten. So it does not look that far off. So that says to us that there is some work that we need to do with how we teach teachers to identify learning deficits and how to assess reading. So, and what to do when they've got that data. So now that I've got 40-some percent of my kids in fifth grade not able to, you know, meet benchmarks on a particular assessment, then that says that I need to do something in terms of professional development with my teachers of reading in fifth grade and beyond uncertainty.
So are we going to continue to use the PALS on the fourth and fifth grade and then eliminate? Did we eliminate? Did we eliminate some other... So both my children are in elementary school. And so the way, the language they use is PALS for benchmark. I realize PALS is a benchmark, but...
No, mid-year PALS is not required of every student. We're sort of checking, it's a progress monitoring. So you're checking some students, we were concerned that they were not, where we want them to be in, do them in year. So it is true that not all children would take the mid-year PALS. But then, like, a quarter test that tests straight comprehension, we would want all fourth and fifth graders to take. We actually also did not require every fourth and fifth grader, every school to give it to every PALS this year just because it was the first year and because, as Ms. Payne already mentioned, we already overwhelmed the schools with assessments. And math was a required for a measure of task in a lot of schools. So there was a lot going on at the beginning of the year. One of the things about being one is we very much would like to have a standard unified language arts assessment portfolio that we know we're going to be watching for this in fluency, this in comprehension, that kind of thing, because a part of this.
Thank you all so much. I really, I just really appreciate what I'm feeling in this moment. It's not just the five of you all. I'm looking all the way back, looking at the principals as far as I can see. Huge, huge that we fully grasp the power of team. I'm a team sport fanatic. And there is something powerful about teaming when you get team. When you recognize that this is way bigger than any of us, but it's not bigger than all of us. I hope they put it to the recorder. So this can get done. Thank you all so much, okay? Colleagues, let me make you aware of something at this point. It is eight fourteen and we are now almost twenty-five minutes behind our schedule. So we just need to be aware of that, okay?
Like I was saying, there are really two parts to this. One is just actually improved for us to move forward implementing the plan. Obviously, part of this one has to do with money also, but just the plan itself. It's funding. I mean, y'all said, yeah, go ahead, you're good.
So I would like to make a motion that we accept and approve the plan pending budget constraints for the district. Does that cover, that covers the financial piece? And that covers the deadline you walked us into, to the State Department, I think I read? It was due January fifteenth or something?
And that's what you got to ask?
Oh, that's what you...
What you said, coverage.
Okay.
Because we've got to handle these kinds of events.
Move to the second.
Motion's made by Mr. Harris Mohammed, second to five. Mr. Moore wants to accept and approve the plan, the academic improvement plan, pending budget constraints for the district. Mr. Sturman?
Discussion. Okay, discussion. I have a last question before we move on to the next one. Well, how much or what pieces of this will... Will there be pieces of this presented in two weeks when we receive your budget?
Yes, all of this is included. Kind of my presentation, all the comments, this is only a piece of the puzzle. Because there are other things. For instance, we have an allocation for, like, I believe some of the Ivy Expansion and Mass Placeta, but I would tell you that we're running a large number because of the work at MIF, stuff like that. So it's this with everything else you only get that's going to be included in the budget. I did send a copy to Chief of Staff for Council and then Mayor's Office just prior to coming. So they're not surprised what was presented tonight to make them aware. So it was sent down just prior to coming.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tim.
Again, the motion was made by Mr. Harris Mohammed, second to five. Mr. Moore wants to accept and approve the academic improvement plan pending budget constraints for the district. Mr. Sturman?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinky Apps?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is to receive for action partners for the school improvement plan, the lead turnaround partners for Reed and Woodville Elementary School and corrective action plan for Bushall and Thompson Middle Schools and Armstrong for their participation.
Mr. Chairman, of course, you started several schools that are on the docket now. I want to thank all the principals and staff, community members. Please don't feel like you've got to sit here. Feel free to step out right now, several schools that are on the docket next. I want to make sure you're quiet on time, Mark.
Good evening, Chair, Board members. First order is that I'd like to make a recommendation to the board to secure NCS Pearson Incorporated as the lead turnaround partner for Woodville Elementary and Reed Elementary School. This lead turnaround partner presented their framework at the December board meeting and proposed scope of work was included in your Friday package on December nineteenth for review. I have a Pearson representative here if there are any questions. And the principals and the ladies from Reed Elementary, Dr. Ferrer, or Woodville Elementary are also here. But I'd like to ask permission, approval to employ NCS Pearson as the lead turnaround partner for those two elementary schools.
Mr. Chairman, this went through the same process as all other schools? That's why we're going to put you through the whole presentation again? So expedite it.
I'd like to move that we first, turnaround partners to the right again. The number likes to second and just be first.
Move to the second.
The motion was made by Mr. Gray, second to five, by Mr. Harris Mohammed, to approve NCS Pearson Incorporated as lead turnaround partner for Reed and Woodville Elementary Schools. Mr. Sturman?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinky Apps?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Yes.
And the next order of business deals with the Thompson Middle School, which has a status of denied accreditation. Bushall Middle School, Armstrong High School, and Wip High School that have our status of conditionally accredited. As you saw in your Friday board package from December nineteenth, a corrective action plans for each one of these schools, the two high schools being very similar, the two middle schools being fairly similar. The plans for Bushall, Armstrong, and Wip will be monitored by the division level per the state requirements. However, the plan for Thompson Middle School, because it is denied, and the agreement between this board and the state board will be monitored by the Virginia Department of Education. I'm asking tonight for your approval of these plans to submit to VDOE. Thompson's plan to submit to VDOE, but also your approval of the other three corrective action plans to implement.
I just want to make sure you're aware that Thompson, this agreement in the state requires governance. So once you approve this, it requires governance.
Just say a one more.
So what we've done won't count, but it is...
What we've done won't count?
You will have to have some continued continuation. I just want to make sure we knew that was there. So once you approve these, I will reach out to VSDA to involve the proposal for you all to consider and respond to to DSA because you already have memberships and that's the most costly probably expedition where you're pressed.
Did you set VSDA?
Yes, a couple of things. The first thing is, tell us what, you said several schools had conditional accreditation. Tell us what that really means.
To receive a conditional accreditation, the school made significant progress in the majority of areas, which would include reading, math, science, and social studies, not only overall, but at each grade level for each of the contents. And if the school system can demonstrate that the school has made those significant gains, the state board considers that school for a conditional accreditation.
Okay, so this shows some growth. You were missing a piece that I was kind of hoping you would share with us. The board needs to, we may not, I never assume that we know something. It does not mean that that school is accredited.
It is not. It is conditionally accredited. And each year, that school will have to go back to the board and continue to demonstrate significant progress.
So are you all expecting the same, or do you all have the same level of expectation for a school that's conditionally accredited as a school that's not accredited?
In some ways, yes. There are some extra hoops that a non-accredited state will have to jump in. For example, those schools are already starting mid-year. They extended PD time immediately. That was part of agreement with the state. So we didn't differentiate in like things like that because again, teachers, they're going to say, follow them. You know, going to be big keys, you know, to change the progress. Those schools are also jump-starting with the framework that you just saw, which is one of the reasons the state approved.
Which schools?
With Armstrong.
The ones that are conditionally accredited?
We did not appeal Thompson, which in one area that showed improvement. And again, the reason other schools got it, they had significant double-digit gains in many areas. The state is shifting to try to figure out how do we, whole schools accountable to support, not just not regular, not the growth. And that's why they got it.
And now that the academic improvement plan has been approved, I will go back in and identify the appropriate core framework practices for each one of the essential actions in these plans before I send it over so that the state board recognizes that we are using that model for all of our processes.
Okay, could you, so we can give clear motions. What do you need?
I'd like to ask the board's approval of the corrective action plans for Thompson Middle School, Armstrong High School, Bushall Middle School, and Georgewood High School.
Let's show it. So move to the second. Move to the second. Is there any discussion? Okay, now, quick.
Okay, the motion's made by Mr. Sturman, second to five, about Dr. Jones to approve corrective action plans for Bushall and Thompson Middle Schools and Armstrong and Georgewood High Schools. Mr. Sturman?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinky Apps?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Dr. Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Questionnaire answers for next.
Thank you, now, quick.
The next item is three points before we receive for action, these were his actions.
Mr. Chairman, those principals, you all, you're okay? Any notes in the stand?
Mr. Coleman, Mrs. Larson, good evening.
Good evening, school board members.
Happy New Year. I present to you tonight the HR actions for approval. Switching to the nomination of sixteen employees and a change of contract of nine employees. HR actions for information include the resignation of seven employees, the rescission of informant of one employee, rescission of resignation of one employee, the returning from leave of one employee, and the change of name of one employee. In addition, there are two addendum items on Addendum A that's coming around to you. There is a termination that's there and can be discussed further in session six, sir. And...
Because of break, did you go and do the docs?
Yes, the docs, December nineteenth.
Okay, okay. It is trying to find...
It's there. You have our copies if someone asks. And on the Addendum B that you have before you, there are two additional nominations and one change of contract.
Okay, we have this question proposed.
Is there more than just a determination?
I'm sorry, who said this?
Is your desire going close more than just a termination or is it...
It's something else, one thing, but it has, it has, it's not, it's on the main stage. It's not really, I'm just, I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Good night, folks. Next slide.
The next item is to receive school track.
Mr. Chairman, without objection, I would like to... Mr. Ball? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a very, very brief conversation with our attorney who said it could be possible. For the district activity and travel funds, I was approached by some parents and stakeholders from the Calvin Cougars who are, play football in the red league, they're a part. They won the city championship, much like the John Marshall basketball team last year. And I was approached by a public sponsor of a championship dinner. You know, five percent, which would be a nice event for kids, most of whom, men, who go to the book club. And so I would just make that request if I needed to. Or I have to do so, but they'd like to have it.
That's before, this is before our next one. Do you have an estimate?
About two hundred and fifty dollars.
Also, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add that one addition to the reports you had before you is from Mr. Harris Mohammed, January twenty-second, Chant and Chu, for approximately four hundred and eighty dollars for food and beverages.
Does she got one? All right. We had an addition of, two additions, their motion. They're motion. Just a consensus, I'm sorry. Miss Capes?
Yes, I would like, previously I requested $125 for a newsletter. I'd like to be able to use those funds for a meeting on January 13th to provide food. We are inviting some of the senior administration to make a presentation to the community, and then I would like to re-request funds to do the newsletter. The newsletter wouldn't come out until, I guess I should wait until next?
Just put it in the normal process.
Well, Mr. Coleman, if her previous request has already been approved, can she just add it as an addition, like Ms. Harris Mohammed and Mr. Warren did tonight, and then she won't have to submit her request a second time?
Okay, does everybody pay attention to Miss Capes' request?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we have consensus on these requests? Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Pursuant to the personnel exemption at 2.2-377, I move that school, one of the senior recruits, be enclosed such as to discuss the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, discipline, or resignation of specific public officers, appointments of employees of the school board, or for discussion, consideration, or interview of prospective candidates for employment.
All the statements in your... You're now closed.